All right, that's my cue.
That was her hello today.
Have a gavel and I'm ready to use it.
No, I haven't touched it.
All right, you guys ready?
Are you gonna hit it?
I'm gonna hit it.
Okay.
Very ceremonious. Hereby a call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners. Will you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the outer banks, we're all like one half of one degree separated from each other. You know, if I don't know you, I know four or five people that do know you. We're all that close, so I was thinking before we go into a moment of silence that there are a number of people in the community, some here in Killable Hills, some friends around in other places. But folks that are struggling recently, diagnoses that you don't want to get, and car wrecks, and all sorts of things that, and I don't know who's overlapping with whom, but if you know who I'm talking about, great. If it's somebody that I don't know about, think about them. But we'll take a couple moments to think about those who are having a tough time today. So join me for a moment of silence. Thank you so much for that. We have an agenda before you. Thoughts? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
I have a second and a half. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have an agenda. First item on our agenda is public comment. We do this twice at each of our meetings. For those who might not know, once now and once at the end of the meeting. If there's anybody out there can see the gears turning, would you like to step up and mention? I have a blank sheet of paper here, so no one has signed up. Going once, going twice. You'll have one more chance at the end of the meeting for a public comment. First up is our presentation on the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year 2022. We got a big award. I'm excited to say. Looking for props. Uh huh, video.
Good evening. My name is Emily Mills, and I'm a partner with Potter and Company. I am pleased to appear before you this evening to present the town's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. First, let me thank you for allowing our firm to perform this service for the town. Second, let me commend the work of the finance office of the town. Beverly, Angel, and the entire staff of the town were helpful, professional, and wonderful to work with. Each member of the finance department should be highly commended for their efforts. On page one of your financial statements, you will find our independent auditor's report. We have issued an unmodified opinion on the statements of the town of Killable Hills as of June 30th, 2022. An unmodified report is the highest level of assurance that we as independent auditors can issue and states that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the town at June 30th, 2022. This is commonly referred to as a clean opinion. In addition to the independent auditor's report, we have also issued a group of reports on the town's compliance. These reports are found in the compliance section of the financial statements, starting on page 167. These reports deal with the town's compliance with governmental auditing standards in addition to the compliance of its federal and state programs with various federal and state laws and regulations. We noted no findings that we consider to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. The LGC changed the audit process last year. They added a sheet to the data input worksheet that benchmarks units against their peers and identifies any issues with the unit's help or from the audit. We are happy to report there are no indicators of concern per this worksheet. The town is in a very healthy position and is exceeding its peers per LGC benchmarks. The financial statements were submitted to the LGC and approved by the LGC on December the 8th. The balance sheet information for the general fund can be found on page 24. At the end of year, June 30th, 2022, the town's general fund had a cash balance of 20 million and restricted cash balance of 4 million. The general fund's total fund balance was 29 million. Of this amount, 16 million was unassigned for any specific purpose. The revenues and expenditures for the general fund are summarized on page 26. The general fund reported 25 million in revenues, 21 million in expenditures, and 3.7 million from other financing sources. This resulted in an increased fund balance of 7 million. The statements for the water and wastewater activities begin on page 30. These funds resulted in a combined increase of 1.5 million for the year. Again, we would like to thank the town for the opportunity to be of service.
Very good. Big thanks for everybody in finance for all the work that goes into being audited. Always a joyful part of the job. You have some more to add?
Yes, Beverly has a quick presentation.
Oh yes, great.
Are there any questions so far for the auditor? Okay, do I have a clicker? I haven't done this in a long, long time. Go ahead, I click. All right, first of all, I'd like for you to notice our cover.
Great Photoshop skills.
Aim for your head?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I want you to notice our cover and all the furry faces that you may have seen at the town hall from time to time or playing in the park. We love this cover because it's dedicated to Mary Elizabeth Quiddly. Longtime town clerk for the town of Killable Hills, and she was here in her position for 37 years. She was instrumental in envisioning and developing numerous community programs and events. Most gratifying to her was the Paul's Park, which opened in June 2019 and was renamed Mary's Paul's Park in February of 2022 in her honor. And I'm just gonna go through a kind of a quick presentation, summary, hopefully pictorial, that you can see of revenues, et cetera, during the year. Aim for her head. To the right, there we go. So as you, when you read through your document, as I'm sure all of you will, you'll see net position, total net position. This is one indicator of a government's financial condition, much like a business enterprise. So the total net position is 68.5 million. Governmental asset, governmental net position is 43.9, and enterprise is 24.5. Net position in a graph, so you can see how it's gradually increasing over time. Thank you, you're doing it for me. Okay, thank you. All right, as you heard Emily say, the general fund, unassigned fund balance is 16.2 million. The 16.2, that's 74.1% of the fiscal year 2022 expenditures. But looking forward at your target fund balance, it's actually 58.2 of the budget that we're in now. Going a little bit further, taking that a little bit further. She also mentioned 29 million. Most of which, or not most, but part of which is restricted. We cannot, it's 7 million, 7.67 million is restricted. Capital reserve funds are 3 million. Those are restricted by the capital reserve ordinances. And then what was appropriated in the 2023 budget is 2.3 million, leaving 16.2 total. But your working capital fund balance policy is 35%. So we must maintain, we maintain the 9.7 million as a fund balance, according to your fund balance policy. So really, the remaining fund balance is 6.5. If 35% is good, and that we don't need to change that policy, we might need to look into it, that's roughly about four months' worth of expenditures. If that's enough. So as over time, the fund balance policy, obviously, that's the 74 of, it's a percentage of the current year that we were in, finished percentage. And that's, that's how the trend is over the past five years. The revenues from the, primary revenues for the general fund, obviously, there's ad valorem tax and MSD in the light blue. And then the occupancy and sales tax, that makes up two, two-thirds of the total revenues. Other revenues are debt financing, grants and unrestricted, which are in the lighter shade. Debt financing with, the grants are in the 11%, debt financing is in 6%, and the 9% is all other revenues. The primary expenditures for the year, again, it's about a third of general government, which is administration, finance, planning, buildings and grounds, public safety, fire, police, ocean rescue. This just shows you where all, where the money was spent. Okay, and this is our budgeted revenues against actual revenues. And as she said, this also includes other financing sources. And other financing sources means the fund balance appropriation, debt financing, and I think we had a sale of some land. So as you see, because we had excess revenues, we really did not need to utilize the $3 million fund balance appropriation. And expenditures, that's good enough. Expenditures were under budget. No, we're good. All right, so the expenditures were for, were under budget as well. So contributing to the increase in the fund balance. Assess value of property, and it says in millions, but you can look at that and say, that's like, that's 3.5 billion. And that's, the town's assessed value is at 3 billion. Okay, sales tax revenues, and again, you can see that the progression of the revenues in 2020, they were a little bit low. In 2021, we had a 31% increase over 2020. And then in 2022, we had a 13% increase over 2021. That's both, that little purple shaded is the MSD portion that we segregate in our sales tax. Okay, occupancy tax, again, you can see 2020 was a, was a bit off. And then in 2021, we had a 54% increase in occupancy tax. And then again, in 2022, an 8% increase over 2021. Land transfer taxes, that just tells a story.
Yeah, that tells a story.
Mm-hmm, that tells a story. This year, we budgeted for a million. I think we will, this is 1.7 million, well, almost 1.8 million in 2022. Not quite touching. Eight percent, eight and a half percent of the 2021, and then it was 128% over 2020.
Slowing down.
Yeah. Okay, and then some other information. We financed, we finance our fleet on an annual basis. We finance 1.367 million for police vehicles and Daco dump truck and three garbage trucks during the year. Again, the debt at this time. Installment borrowing, borrowing, that's mostly those equipment purchases. The four, the direct placement installment borrowing, borrowing is for beach nourishment of the 4.2 million, 3.6 is FEMA money that would hopefully be returned to us soon. And then we, and there is some debt in the water fund. It's a zero interest installment note, and the balance is 22,000. All right, some other major things that happened during the year were street and drainage projects. These, this is money spent during the year. Multi-use paths, sidewalks, Meekins Field, beach nourishment was a big, big one for the year. The pavilion at Aviation Park and the completing the Moore Shore access. And then one notable thing, a major initiative, is we sold land at the Eighth Street corner for 1.5 million. Again, during the year, there's another major initiative, a grant project budget ordinance to record the special revenue fund for the American Rescue Plan. ARPA money, this, we received the first tranche in 2022. We will get the second tranche in 20, well, we have in this fiscal year. And that might be a good topic for budget, this budget guidance discussion going forward. Major initiatives in the water fund is the Third Street projects at 1.3 million, the Dare County KDH interconnection, 55,000, and the water system master plan for 111,000. There's a picture of water fund revenues to budget. And they're kind of on point, pretty much. And then, as well as the budget and the expenditures, actual expenditures. Okay, same for the wastewater fund. And then we have a, we've had an outstanding loan between the wastewater and the water fund for years, and that we've been working that down over time. And it's currently at $450,000. And I think that's it for that. And then the last thing I'd like to do is, unless there's questions, any other questions? I'm going to present the 34th consecutive certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. It's our 34th certificate.
That's great.
And as you know, this is, this is prestigious award. Recognizes conformance with the highest standards for preparation of state and local government financial reports. I want to thank Angel and Charlene and the finance department for doing, they actually did all, did all the work. And this is, this is not the, this is for the 2021 fiscal year. This is the 2022 fiscal year, so it's for one year only. But we really think this one's gonna get it as well. So anyway, I want to thank you for your continued support of this program and your... Thank you guys, too.
Excellent job, excellent. Very good.
No questions?
Great presentation, really hit all the highlights that we like to see. You get how we like to roll around here, efficient, we like to be efficient. But yeah, great, great numbers, really impressed with everybody that's involved in keeping those expenses down from, but, you know, budgeted, we budgeted certain numbers that came in way below, that's why it's nice to see. We definitely had some, some wind to go our direction with FEMA and other things. I don't, it's a tough budget year to look at as coming up, what we're going into. You know, things are changing. So again, thank you for all your hard work and having your finger on the pulse for all that. Thanks to the whole team and all the department heads that work with them. Any other comments from the board?
Excellent job, always.
And yeah, we, we share your pride and thank you so, for working so hard and getting the 34th. And we're working on the 35th. All right, let's see what's on our agenda here. Moving on, we have, we talked at the previous meeting about electronic speed recording devices, and we got two things in your packet, thank you very much, chief. So we've got some, some items to talk about there briefly. I think you guys saw this memo. Some recommendations there about places that are most likely to see the benefit. I might be able to change some behaviors for some of the people that were worried about speeding around the town. So was there a presentation, or we just opened it up for discussion, or?
Unless you had any questions, the chief or myself.
I think, I think you covered it pretty well, but if anybody had any questions about it, I guess these, just for the, for the public, these devices are kind of state of the art. They talk to the internet and allow us to get the data without having a whole lot of manpower be expended to go out and do it in person, as they say. In the old, in the old days, you had to go download the stuff off of it and swap out batteries. And these are solar powered, web-enabled, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully, very efficient use of our tax dollars to get the benefit that we're looking for, which is public safety in the west side neighborhoods.
I want to ask, how do you take, all right, so the signs themselves obviously have their own effect on the driver to slow them down, you hope. What do you do with, what do you think you'll do, what would you envision doing? What do you do with the data? If you see that regardless of the sign, it's, it's still a problem, or it's, or it's an anomaly and there's still, there's still issues in that area, are you gonna use that data? Like, would you envision using that data to, to help you make decisions on how to put your resources in certain spots?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's part of the whole, the plan is that, you know, these signs give us an indication of where there's a problem, if there's a problem. And then we can, you know, send officers out there to run radar and enforce it.
And they're easy to move, to move around, I assume?
Well, I wouldn't say easy, because, and we haven't, we haven't had these particular signs, the solar signs before. So obviously, they have the solar panel there to charge the battery. So it's a little bulky, but not impossible to move. And the, and the first, with these signs, the first year is the, is free web-based, so we don't have to pay for the cloud the first year. They got a two-year warranty. The battery life is about 10 to 12 years. So, but you know, that's in normal circumstances. We've got something with solid air, you know, affects.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you haven't, I'm not exactly, I don't see exactly where you sit, give your opinion on this, but do you, you just think that it, do you think that it's going to be a significant assist to the police department?
I think the, the bigger question is it gonna have an effect on the violators, on the people that speed?
Right.
That's probably gonna be the biggest effect.
Okay. So it's that effect and a secondary benefit for you to use the data, analyze data, and potentially allocate resources to certain spots? Or, or to certain type of things, like versus traffic versus other type of patrol or other type of?
Yes, yes, sir.
Services.
People are creatures of habit. I imagine that, you know, if you've got the, somebody that speeds down that road at 4:32 every day, it could have some actionable intelligence, as it were.
Sure. Yeah, that's what, I guess that's what I'm trying to get, get at. Like, if it was just a box, I don't think, I don't know if it'd be worth it. But if you're going to, if it really has a, you know, the data is really gonna help, you know, make decisions, help you make decisions specifically, and that's gonna make a difference too, then, then maybe that, those two, those two things together make, make it make sense for this expense.
I also like the A/B test, too, that I've heard that you can run these things without the sign being on. It just collects data, doesn't have that feedback. Because there is kind of two parts of it. There's the data that you collect, and then there's that, you know, psychological. You're driving along, you're thinking about what's on the radio. You're posted up to 30 miles an hour, don't realize it. And then the thing flashes at you, oh, oh, and that'll change your behavior. So you can run it for a couple weeks and not give the feedback, and then run it for the next two weeks with it and probably see the data change.
That's right. Yes, sir.
I know we have some speed detection devices now that are deployed when complaints come in. I've seen them around before. How many of those do we actually have on hand now?
We have two that's in service now. We had a total of four. The, and we started buying them 12 years ago. So the, the first one that we bought, obviously, is the computer stopped working and the battery stopped tolling and charging everything. The second one fell in the water during the hurricane, during the storm, and got damaged. And so the, the two newest ones, you know, they, they, and the thing about those signs, they're a little cheaper, $4,500, I think is what we pay for them. But they, they cost more manpower, because we have to have an officer go out there, keep it charged, go out there, change the battery, bring it back here to the police department, charge the battery, carry it back out there, actually go manually, download the data from it. And so we've only got two. So we move them periodically. So it's a lot of man hours spent moving those signs around and keeping the batteries charged. And they're, they're not solar power like the, these are.
Have you heard any other police chiefs in other areas think that these are, make opinions about these, about these boxes?
I, I have, I have not. I know Southern Shores, there's one in Southern Shores that they have operational and...
I think they have a couple. I think they might have two or three.
They definitely have one on twelve.
Yeah. But there's a couple back in.
There's one on Dogwood as well.
Yes, yeah.
Right at the top of them, not far past the school.
And we checked with Chief Hale from Nags Head, and they operate a speed trailer. That's kind of all the, they've got a speed trailer that they move around from place to place.
They like that, they think it works, they use the data, what about the?
Well, I, I got some data from Chief Hale and from before they changed the speed limit to after they changed the speed limit. And the data pretty much mirrors our data, just less vehicles. So, and it didn't, it didn't change much.
What about this expense versus adding like another officer? Maybe there was designated, designed, you know, that officer was assigned to just doing speed tickets? I don't know. What about the cost of this versus adding another officer?
I, I think that's apples and oranges, and I don't think it would, I don't think it would suffice, because if that, if we were to hire another officer, we're still gonna have speeding complaints. And people say we're not where they want us to be when they want us to be there. And so I don't think that would necessarily solve the problem.
Make a difference in five different places for 10 years.
Yeah.
Where the same amount of money would hire an officer for one year.
Right, right.
But what do you say when I read comments and public comments about that it's an enforcement issue? What would you say to that? Like, like it's just, the speed's there, it's not being enforced, what would you say to that?
Well, I would say that we've, I've heard, we've gotten the same complaints, and it's just not true. Because we, we can show that we've been in the neighborhoods on Third Street particularly, enforcing it, and the same people that are saying we're not there for weeks at a time, it's just not true, because we have tickets with dates and times that we were there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Have you, and it seems that you have, because I've seen it. You're, have you upped your patrol on these streets that you identified here in this? You have recently?
Yes, sir.
And that was your directive?
Well, before, well, before we even started talking about that, when the first complaint came in, we started, you know, going, more enforcement out there.
Okay.
You know, it's...
Because I think what we're struggling with is, I just talked from talking to everybody here, or a few people, is the expense versus the, like, will it, you know, will it, will it make a difference? You know, is the expense worth the, worth the?
Chief, swerve the squeeze, swerve the juice somehow.
Cost-benefit analysis.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a designated traffic control unit, or no?
No, sir.
Have we ever had one?
Yes, sir.
It didn't work, or what?
We just don't, we don't have the manpower to do it, to, to have a designated. We tried it, and then we started breaking the unit up to cover shifts that, you know... W- we tried it and then we started breaking the, um, unit up to cover shifts that, you know, night shifts or when somebody was on vacation or sick or whatever, um, and it just, it just didn't work.
Typically, how many officers do you have on a shift?
Mandated two, um-
So if one gets tied up with like a DUI or something like that, you lose him for four or five hours, so you've only got one?
At least four or five hours, yes. Um, normally, we can have three on a shift, but, you know, and, and i- it's a good problem to have, the, the longer people stay, the longer employees stay here, the more time they build up, vacation and sick and everything, and they take that time, so then we have to cover that shift, it's a good problem to have, but, you know, it-
Manpower, yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Ingram, did you have a question, I don't-
My question was actually BJ's question about the other towns, cause I know I've seen them, you know, in different places and you go outside of here, I mean, they're, they're everywhere, if you, you know, the signs are in, they're in Raleigh, they're in Greensboro, they're, you know, they're in a lot of places and, so that just tells me that they must somewhat work if they're, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Well, it's, it's psychological, you know, some people, it's psychological too, you know, Pete stood up here and gave a, a great story of him going to church and, you know, he
Yeah. Absolutely.
and not thinking and he's going over the speed limits, he's assigned and, you know, so it's, it's, uh, it's psychological to some people.
Right. Yes.
They're awfully expensive. Because they're what, fifty-four thousand to buy them?
To buy ten of them, yes.
Yeah, to buy ten of them.
Yes.
And then you've got additional thirty thousand in maintenance.
Two years.
If I read it right.
Well, fifteen hundred dollars, n- not for the maintenance, fifteen hundred dollars per sign, per year, um, for the-
Times ten would be fifteen thousand.
For the, um, access to data, to have it, yeah.
Right. Seems like a lot of money to me.
It's a pretty high subscription rate, yeah.
So fifteen thousand a year subscription?
For ten of them.
Yeah, for ten, yeah, I mean, that, that's what these-
But you only get- And you only get five streets, because you, in order for them to be effective, they only, um-
You have to have two, one, each way, yeah.
Yes, one eastbound and one westbound, so they get both, uh, lanes of traffic.
More so than, go ahead.
Five streets covered.
More, more so than, um, how long do they last? Aren't they at a particular time deemed obsolete?
Well, they've got a computer in there, so, you know, and, and that's what happened to our first generation of signs, that they just, the, the support, uh, was not there for them anymore, they stopped making that model, um, so, yeah.
How, how often does that happen, uh, do you know any type of frequency or?
I don't know, I don't know, Commissioner, I'd, I'd have to look, look that up for you.
Got two-year warranty though, good for two years anyway.
Two, yeah.
Two years they'll replace if it goes out, I think that's how that goes.
And, um, so we get the first year of, um,
Data's free.
Data free. I, these signs would work with the manual download as well, um, so that's an option of just not getting the data information anymore. Um, it, it, it would still cost man hours to go out there and download, um, manually, but, you know, the, the savings would be the solar power, we wouldn't have to, you know, charge the batteries, uh, all the time, so that, that could be a cost saving there.
Maybe, maybe it's more for discussion of the board, but, you know, it just seems like maybe, I don't know, instead of ten, maybe four of these and see how it works or something like that, you know, just, uh, you know, as an idea.
That's up to you guys.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not forward to where it goes.
I mean, I mean, ten, twenty, two, you know, I guess, you know, that's, I mean, we don't-
There's something to be said to, to spread these kinds of costs out to, like, if you have a hotel, you got a thousand beds, you try to replace a third of them every year, if you're gonna do it on three years, same deal, if we wanted to have ten, maybe we wanna buy
And it may, it, it may be helpful just to buy a couple and to see if we like them, see if they're effective, to see, you know, when-
Couple of years.
See how it goes. There's no big bulk discount or anything like that, so.
Well, the, the-
This is discount a little bit.
Discount a little bit, yes, uh-
But not much, it's three twenty, okay, yes, not much, okay.
Well, my, my thought is that this is probably something that we could discuss during budget.
Yep.
Um, my, my next question would be, as expensive as an item as it is, have we looked at the grant possibilities for them?
There are currently, no, we, we have, we, we've looked at some grants and the only grant that's out there right now, um, is for LPRs, uh, license plate readers, um, and we've been researching that a little bit, but, um, it, it's not a one-hundred percent grant, it's a matching grant, so I don't-
I, I'd rather see, you know, the grant possibility survey to see if there is anything more so than maybe what you've seen, and, uh, you know, it seems like to me that any, anytime you could save taxpayers dollars is a, is a, is ahead of the game, you know, so.
Sure.
But, but I, my thought is, I think we need to look at it at budget time and a lot of money.
Yeah, well, you know, hey, you, you brought the topic to us, we've had, uh, citizens in here speaking to us, so.
I, I, and the thing I gather out of it is, you know, everybody seems to think that more enforcement, but then again, it, that's gonna require, you know, personnel. So, but I think, I think enforcement is a big part of it.
Yep, I recall we had fifty tickets in, in a year on the west side, is that right? Well, thank you so much for the details, we definitely have a lot to chew on, we really appreciate you doing the homework for us and giving us some insight about it. Uh, it's, uh, it's challenging, one of those challenges we keep gnawing on, we will, we'll figure a way forward.
Yes, thank you.
As, like you said, there's a lot of ways to spread it out budget-wise and there's, uh, a lot of ways to dip your toe in or go big, whichever we kind of feel like we have the appetite for. Any other discussion about?
I like, I kinda like the idea of, we'll be get back into our budgetary process, cause there's more time to have to think about it and there may be other things that pop up between now and then, like license plate readers that deserve consideration for investment as well. So, that's a, a good time and place that we do.
Alright, if there's not urgency, we can definitely put it in the cycle, that seems to be the consensus at the moment.
Maybe we can get some kind of report from the other towns on how many they have and what kind of results they have. That might be good to have.
Yeah.
Alright, well, great discussion, guys, appreciate that, and thanks again, Chief, for the insights. Next item is new business, we have a seat on the planning board that's coming open, the member I think has expressed interest in being reappointed, and if someone had some other ideas, let me know.
Uh, Becky does a good job.
I think she is too, I'd, I'd move that, uh, we reappoint, uh, Becky Reholtz to the planning board.
Super, we have a motion on the floor and-
I'll second.
Second over here, any further discussion about Becky? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Congratulations to Becky, if you're listening, we appreciate your service and, uh, thanks for doing it for another three years for us. Uh, next up is committee reports, anything from the visitors bureau? Since last we met?
Have a meeting tomorrow morning, I feel like I always have a meeting, I know, it's always the next day, um, January twenty-fourth, there is a long range planning meeting at the Ramada Inn at, I believe, six P M.
Six P M.
Um, so if anyone's interested in coming out to that, um, it would be great to have your feedback.
Yep, I'm doing one down in Hatteras as well.
Yes, one down in Hatteras, um, that's it.
That's it, alright, any other committee reports?
No.
John, no.
The, um-
Got something on the C A C, we have a meeting on the books, the Thursday the twenty-sixth, eight-thirty in the morning.
Twenty-sixth, that's a Thursday.
Good morning in this room.
Open to the public, anybody interested in, new ideas for beautification, ready for another spring to come around, the days are getting longer, I like to say this time of year, doesn't feel like it.
She does a much better job at talking about the C A C than I do, I always gotta miss her when she's not here, but, yes, we can reconvene on the twenty-sixth.
Alright, well, great meeting, always bummed to miss those, pesky job of mine, couldn't let me go. Alright, next up is commissioner's agenda, um, anybody wanna start?
Um, I've been working on a, um, committee with the, uh, Dare County veterans, uh, and I think, um, what was the date you said that Wally had indicated they were gonna do a presentation?
February the thirteenth.
February the thirteenth, we're, we're gonna be getting a presentation from Commissioner Overman from the Dare County Board.
Okay.
Uh, highlighting, um, the, the work that's been done, it's, uh, it's the wall that heals, uh, and it's a replica of the Vietnam Veteran Wall, uh, it's gonna be coming to the event site in November of this year.
Okay.
And it's gonna be a pretty, pretty big show, I think, so, other than that, uh, that's all I have, sir.
Alright, super.
Uh, boom, just come in the town on the cleanup on April, on, on the December twenty-third storm that happened, um, it affected a lot of people, uh, sound side and, um, picking up the trees, of course, uh, Christmas trees like they always do, and of course, I've actually spent a little time at the, at the, um, at the recycling center, uh, of late, um, and Candy and that group does a really good job over there, I just wanna say thank you to them too.
Excellent, excellent.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for all the effort in the holiday markets and the town with decorating, I, we were, I took my dog to the park right before Christmas, like two or three days before Christmas at eight o'clock at night, and I looked around and there was no less than fifty people in the park, and it, there was no event going on, it was just people using the park, there was probably twenty or thirty skateboarders, there's twenty people on the roller rink, there was ta- a group of ten or twelve couple, adult couples walking around the park, taking pictures in the Santa seed, so it, it just was really cool to see that, especially on a night that there wasn't a big function happening, so it's, it's very cool to see it getting used and-
It's, it's a lot of good use.
Mm-hmm, it really does, yeah.
And I think those, those events have really made that happen, cause it ex- those events exposed it to people who forgot it was there or didn't know it was there.
Yes.
Sure.
Right, right.
And it's also looking really good, thanks to buildings and grounds and the guys have done a fantastic job limiting up trees and keeping it beautiful and
Yes.
Christmas lights were out of this world this year, really fantastic.
I'll just, I wanna echo Commissioner McAvoy's sentiment around the recycling center, cause, uh, I'm a frequent customer of theirs and like, one of my first impressions of going there, I made the mistake of putting something in the wrong place. You don't wanna cross Candy. She does a wonderful job keeping things organized and smoothly running and, uh, so, and I, I bet dedication and hard work is, you'll learn quick if you take it, uh, so, in an, in a polite and professional way.
Yes.
And, uh, another thing I noticed, I saw some really positive social media activity around the disc golf course around the holidays, especially like, people talking about how busy it is, well, well, hold on a second, let's see if they're really that busy.
Yeah.
So I rode out there a couple of times and it was overrun with cars.
Wow.
I mean, their parking lot's full, Camp Salt's full, backed up, so tremendous activity and, and, and just going on back there, so it's really all of our recreational resources being well utilized though, much job.
Yeah. Yes, thank you for all of that. One of the best things about being mayor is getting to go last, cause they do all my hard work for me. Thanking everybody, so I reiterate all that was said, thanks to all the departments, all the work that's been done. We've had a really, really great year, uh, you know, I, I joke, I've joked a number of times at these meetings that there's something weird about the fact that the first two years I was mayor, we were wearing masks. Right. And so, I don't think about masks anytime the rest of the month, and then I get out of my car and go. So, yeah, it's nice to have that in the rearview and, and we've really done a, a lot with, uh, with, uh, I really think the community's come together and, and the staff has worked, has always worked well together and done great things, but really outdone themselves in the last year. In so many ways you can, can't even count it, so, thanks to everyone for all you do. Uh, let's see here, town manager's agenda.
Um, just to remind the board that we do have a meeting next Wednesday, January the twenty-fifth, and we were hoping to use that opportunity for, um, some budget guidance and just to start reviewing with the board some of our thoughts and getting some guidance from you, so that'll be on the twenty-fifth of January at six o'clock. And at this point, that's the only thing on the agenda, so hopefully it won't be a very long meeting.
Super. Looking forward to that. Just realized, I think I might have double booked myself, the other people have to live without me. Alrighty, um, so next item is, uh, the town attorney's agenda, anything, sir?
Happy New Year's, guys, looking forward to the twenty-three, so, that's it.
Thank you for that, happy new year to you too. Uh, let's see, consent agenda.
Yes, sir, um, consent agenda, we have the minutes from December the twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, monthly report, November twenty-twenty-two, budget amendment number five, which appropriates salaries, um, appropriate funds for salary increase directed by the board commissioners, the annual certification of firefighters is number four, this, um, is our fire department has prepared this list, which includes only those firefighters that have met the state's minimum requirement for training hours, and approval of the consent agenda will record the board's certification of the roster. Number five is a recommendation for the audit services for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three and continuing services through twenty-twenty-five, we're recommending the Potter and Co- and Company, um, the folks that, um, are currently doing our audit, had a really good relationship with them and uh, approval of the consent agenda would authorize the manager to execute the contractual agreement for the services for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three and to approve the form, of the firms, excuse me, continuation of services to the town through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, those dates are hard to say. Recreditation of continual approv- approval of the Wright Brothers' U S one fifty-eight Phase Four Sidewalk Project, um, this was action that was done to the board so that we could continue and keep that on schedule, and approval of the consent agenda will record the board's action in the minutes of this meeting. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented and a motion would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Thank you for the consent agenda, we appreciate that. That brings us to our second opportunity for the many, many folks of the public that are here, to pitchforks to tell us how they feel. I wanna pitchfork today, take all the fun out of it. Alright, last chance for public comment, okay, we'll close public comment, which leaves us down to one motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Just making sure I wasn't leaving.